We'll go down to City Council meeting to order for Tuesday, January 6th, 2015. You have your call.
Councilmember Okerberg.
Here.
Schultz.
There.
Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Spenden.
Dotson.
Here.
Abraham.
Here.
Mayor Coats.
Here.
There's six of the council and the mayor present this evening.
Thank you. Please rise and join us in the order of the meetings. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight for our meeting and with that we'll move on to approval of the agenda. And we do have one that was changed from a project to a resolution. Okay, yeah. We do, yes. Requires three people to take the oath of office tonight. And with that, we'll have Councilmember Okerberg? No, he's already been sworn in.
Just Nate and myself.
Nate and, oh, Brent is not here. Okay. So we'll have just the two of you being sworn in.
Please come forward. And congratulations on the tough campaigns that you ran. That was very nice that you were successful in doing that, so, yes.
Just squeaked them off, both of us.
If I get you, raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Mayor Zee Burbank.
I, Nathan Dotson.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The laws of the City of Owatonna.
The laws of the City of Owatonna.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office.
Of the office.
Of the office. Of Councilmember Third Ward.
Councilmember First Ward.
Of the City of Owatonna.
Of the City of Owatonna.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
Welcome to another term.
Thank you.
Yes, sign, sign.
Thank you. And with that, we will now move on to approval of the agenda with the change to, from a motion to a resolution.
Thank you.
So we have a motion by Greg to approve it with the change. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. We'll move on to the organizational meeting and the first one is to appoint a council president. This is done every two years after the election of council members. Chris.
Yes. Council typically selects among its members a council president and it's, as Les said, is done after an election as we have here. So we take nominations and the council votes among itself who should be the president for the next two years.
I would nominate Les Abraham to continue as president.
We need a second to that. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, congratulations, Les.
With that, we'll move to the next one as, and I don't have to be sworn in to do this, so. Vice President, we'll look for a motion to appoint someone as vice president of the council.
Motion to appoint Greg Schultz.
We have a motion to appoint Greg Schultz as vice president. Do we have a second?
I second.
Second by Jeff Okerberg. Do we have any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll request a motion for approval of Greg Schultz as vice president. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Greg. You've done a good job so far.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to, the next item is to appoint council members to boards and commissions and you did receive all of the, the list of all the boards and commissions that we serve on. I'll turn it over to Chris.
Yes. These are the various council committee assignments that each year, each year actually, we, we look at these and council decides among themselves where they want to serve. There's various meeting dates and times and commitment levels and so, and also areas of interest for council to, to look at and decide if that is an appropriate committee for you to serve on. May I suggest since council member Swemby is absent, we, you know, continue this until the 20th and when Brent is here and we can decide at that point and give you some additional time to consider which committees you might want to serve on.
So would we be really looking for a motion to table until the next council meeting to take action on who would be appointed to the various positions?
Yeah. Or motion to make table this?
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dotson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved to be tabled until the next council meeting. Moving on to appointment of, or schedule a summary of the city board and commissions and that will go back to Chris.
Well, actually, we're moving on to that resolution designating depositories.
Okay.
Right? Yep.
All right, resolution 1-15, designate depositories.
Wait, wait, oh, I am wrong. I told you wrong. I skipped one. I apologize. Just sort of put that in there as an information so that everyone would have it and just, just given approval that you're aware that those are when those commissions and boards do meet.
One of the things that we did talk about and I think I probably should discuss though is that when we do appoint individuals for these, I'd like to have, give Tom a little more help in getting input as to who would become commission members or board members on those various committees. So would, would like to look at that and help Tom get, get some of that. So I'd like to have you all look at that and see if there's people that, when they're stepping down, if we got somebody that can step up to take the decisions. So we will not take any action at this point, right, Tom?
We would, and I appreciate the help, so thank you, yes.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to resolution 1-15, designate depositories in persons with authorized. Chris.
Thank you, Les. The Office of the State Auditor recommends the city annually designate depositories for the upcoming year and formally appoint individuals authorized to disperse those funds. This resolution appoints the mayor, city administrator, finance director, senior accountant and accountant to disperse those funds through check, electronic funds transfer, wire or ACH. There's no effect on our current operating budget and staff would recommend approval of this ordinance or this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate Dotson to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved as presented. Next item is resolution 22-15, designate response authorities for data practices 2015. And Chris, again.
Thank you. We are required under the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act to annually designate an individual as the responsible authority. Typically, the chief administrative officer serves in this capacity and that is myself. Staff would recommend approval of resolution 2-15.
Thank you, Chris. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okerberg. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Now moving down to 1.4, 0.7, change meeting date, dates during 2015. And with that, Chris, again.
What we're looking for is approval to change the date of the first council meeting in August of 2015, which conflicts with some other activities. Tuesday, August 4th is also the date of the Night to United event and historically we have moved this meeting to the previous day, that first Monday of the month. So we were looking for council approval to move the meeting date to Monday, August 3rd. We'll of course provide the proper notification to media regarding the change of this date.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Jeff Okerberg to approve the change. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving down to 1.4, 0.8, designate Owatonna People's Press as the official newspaper for the city in 2015. And there we go to Chris again.
According to our city charter, at the first regular meeting each year, the city council shall designate a newspaper of general circulation as the official paper for publication of all matters required by law. Our public notices must be published in a qualified newspaper and the Owatonna People's Press meets these criteria and staff would recommend approval, approval of Owatonna People's Press as the official newspaper for the city during 2015.
Thank you, Chris. Questions from the council?
To approve.
Motion by Nate to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okerberg. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving down to 1.4, 0.9, appoint Fire Chief Johnson as a weed inspection inspector during 2015.
These are another one of those duties that we have to assign each year. It's a housekeeping item and historically this has been fulfilled by our Fire Chief, Mike Johnson during the last several years. It's worked out well and offers a good point of contact for our residents with concerns regarding weeds and nuisance violations. So staff would recommend approval, appointing Fire Chief Mike Johnson as a weed inspector for 2015.
Thank you, Chris. Questions on the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Next item on the agenda is a finance report and I will ask Greg to report.
Okay, I'll give a quick recap. Checks over 20,000 are, 26, excuse me, $26,340 to Borneke Construction for the Northwest Industrial Park Pond, $22,500 to Flaherty and Hood for class and comp study and management and training, $30,630 to Mailer Roofing for the American Legion Roofing Project, which was an SCDP project, $49,502 to the Steel County Auditor for third quarter LEC costs and the city's share of the election ballot costs, $54,221 to the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities as an annual membership fee, $27,406 to Harris Enterprise Resource Planning, which is the annual software license and maintenance agreement, other expenditures of $314,809 for a subtotal of $525,411. Add to that the Section 8 payments of $54,717 for total expenditures presented for approval tonight of $580,128.56.
Thank you, Greg. You've read the report and what is the council's wishes?
Motion to pay the bills.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to approve the financial report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dotson. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. We now move on to the consent agenda item, which are minutes of meetings, permit requests, other reports, all grouped into one motion. We have a, looking for a motion to approve.
Don't move.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion on this? One thing that we do have in here that I would like to mention is that we have an equipment purchase of a 2015 Tempco Street Sweeper. That has been approved in our budget from last year and even though there is cost, it does exceed $100,000 for that. I think you saw that in the report. I just wanted to announce that it is a expenditure in there. So with, with that, any other discussion or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Moving on to action items, resolution 3-15 to accept feasibility report and set date for public hearing on 2015 Mineral Springs Park reconstruction.
Les, I'll let you recuse myself from this one.
Okay, we have, Greg is recusing himself. With that, we'll move to Kyle.
Good evening. We brought back the Mineral Springs Parkway construction project. Have attached a feasibility report. The estimated total cost, including engineering and legal administration and contingencies is $754,640 with a proposed amount of $139,603 being assessed. The project does go from the end of Cherry Street by Mineral Springs Park up to Mineral Springs Road. As many of you are aware, it is a roadway that is still rural. It's just about a 20-foot wide bituminous street without curb and gutter. This project will turn that into an urban roadway with curb and gutter and will include a trail from Mineral Springs Road to where it terminates by the park now. We did hold a neighborhood informational meeting on December 9th. There was one property owner in a, well, two, excuse me, two property owners in attendance and didn't hear a lot of objection to the project. We were able to explain a few of the things that we were proposing and worked out a sanitary sewer issue with one of the property owners. So available for any questions, but staff does recommend approval. Oh, one other, sorry, one other thing. The total cost will exceed our cap of $52 a foot, so the assessment rate would be $52 a foot on this.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
Just a clarification. I think we need two weeks on that notice. Jeanette was telling me, so it couldn't be the January... Do you need a two-week notice for the first one?
I thought that was 10 days.
I looked at it again today and I was thinking it was two weeks, but we'll have to clarify that.
I think the first one is 10 days.
First one is 10 days that we can put it in this, this Friday.
Total and then...
The second one is two weeks, that's right.
Second one is 14 days, yep.
Okay. Never mind. Sorry.
What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate Dotson to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okerberg. Any further discussion on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Moving down to resolution 4-15 to accept feasibility report and set date for public hearing on 2015 LeMond Road reconstruction. And again, back to Kyle.
Again, this is a project that we have worked on in the past. LeMond Road, we are proposing to significantly shorten the project. Originally, it was to go from Selby Avenue to the I-35 Bridge. We've, for a number of reasons, we're proposing to shorten that and reconstruct the section from Selby to just beyond Kim. Actually, the match-in point will be about 100 feet or so west of Kim Avenue. The estimated cost is $737,468 with a proposed amount of $65,157 being assessed. We also held a neighborhood meeting for this project on December 9th. There was one property owner in attendance. The property owner supported the project and was actually looking forward to having it completed, which is kind of nice to have that. So again, this project would exceed the cap of $52 a foot and so the assessment rate would be at $52 a foot. And the improvement hearing will be held on January 20th in front of the council. So unless there's any questions, staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Kyle. Now this, the rest of the LeMond Road will probably be done within the next two years?
That, that would be up to funding and we've, we've had some issues with, that we're working through with property owners out there.
Okay.
And, you know, I can't guarantee that it'll be, we could certainly have it delivered if, if, if that's what was wished, so.
But we're looking at getting as much done as we can right now.
Yeah, it, you know, the original project was close to $2 million to do the whole thing. It was a large project to manage and there were some large property owners with large assessments. And then there's also some areas that are challenging with, you know, that draw towards the west end, you know, the slopes and it presents some challenges, so.
Okay. Okay. Questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate Dotson. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving down to resolution 5-15, order a feasibility report on 2015 Street and Utility Projects and we're back to Kyle.
Good evening. I have two feasibility reports, ordering two. One for 2015 Street and Utility Project. That would involve full reconstruction of Cherry Street from Larch to Aspen Highlands. This would be, this is a one-block section. It's also the two ends of Maple Drive. It's in fairly deteriorated condition. Bituminous pavement rehabilitation, this would be similar to what was done near Wilson School last, this year. That would be on 7th Avenue Northeast from Mineral Springs Road to 26th Street Northeast. The alley just east of the post office, the alley behind Godfather's Pizza and Snap, I think Snap Fitness is still there, and then an alley south of Harland's Tire between Oak and Walnut. And then also, we would include OPU has requested a parking lot be constructed on just south of Harland's Tire where we removed a home just this fall. And then on Killworth Drive between Brady Boulevard and State Avenue, that's out in the industrial park on the east side of the highway. It's currently a gravel road and we'd like to see that improved to a city street. That's the first resolution. The second is for state aid bituminous pavement rehabilitation project. It's kind of a mouthful, but it's Lincoln Avenue from School Street to 16th Street Southeast and then Lincoln Avenue from Main Street to School Street would be overlaid. That section has not been overlaid in the past, so we can get away with just overlaying that. Austin Road from 18th Street Southeast to Havana Road. And then Havana Road from Austin Road to Truman would be overlaid also. That is another street that's, we've heard a lot about and I think it's time to do something with. So on Aus, or excuse me, on Havana Road, we would be doing some patching before the overlay. There's some sections that are pretty crumbly, so. The state aid project is estimated at $860,000 and the Street and Utility Project is estimated at $790,000. So quite a bit of bituminous work, not much underground. There is a one-block stretch of underground on 7th Avenue Northeast that we'd be replacing the water main at the request of OPU. They've had a lot of breaks there, but other than that, it's not a lot of underground, but quite a bit of new pavement.
Thank you. Okay, we'll deal with 5-15 first, feasibility report on street utility projects. What is the council's wishes?
Motion approved.
The motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion here? Cap?
Kyle, I've just got one question. I know last year, the Cedar Dale and 18th Street, they were looking at concrete construction for that alleyway and now it's bituminous. Are they on board with that?
Well, we will be holding a neighborhood meeting with, with the folks there. I've done the estimated cost and it's about double to do concrete over bituminous in that area. So what we're showing is a heavier section of bituminous because of the concern for the amount of traffic coming through that alley. So we did evaluate the concrete and we can discuss that with them. We do have the estimated costs, but it is about double of what the bituminous would be, so.
Okay, thank you. If, if they come back and really want the concrete, we will revisit that?
Yeah, a decision would have to be made. The cost is around, I'm going off of memory here, forty-some dollars a foot for bituminous and it goes to $80 a foot for concrete, so that would exceed the $52. So council would have to make a decision if they wanted to pick up that cost or how to handle that difference.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Moving on to resolution 6-15, what is the council's wishes there?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okerberg. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving on to miscellaneous items, we have 3.31 Art Center construction project and we'll go to Chris.
As you know, we met with the Art Center Board earlier this evening and discussed their plans for the addition and they are, have presented to council their plans for the fundraising and what they would do in the event the bids would come in higher than anticipated. They are requesting council authorize them to be allowed to go out for bid on the addition to the Art Center. So I have prepared a resolution that is at your desk for council consideration and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Chris. You all received the resolution. Any questions or comments on resolution 7-15? Cap?
The only other thing I would, I would say is I know that the Arts Center Board, they've, they've had a lot of challenges going, going forward with this and thank you for working through the, the issues and I think in result it'll be very nice.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion to approve.
That is a motion, okay. Do we, we have a motion by Kevin. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate Dotson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Please move forward with it and look forward to it. Good news. With that, we will move on to public comment. If anyone wishes to speak to us on any items not on the agenda, please step to the mic. Seeing none, we'll move on to council comments and with that, we'll start with Jeff Okerberg.
No comments.
No comments. Greg Schultz?
I have just a couple. First off, Happy New Year to everyone. It seems like it's a long time since our last meeting. It has been, actually. Since then, we did have a, another meeting on the airport master plan and that's going along well. Everything is very good there. It brought up some interesting things though and I think we need to discuss them sooner rather than later. The same engineering company that's doing the master plan for the airport is also doing the 26th Street study for the county.
Okay.
And when you look at the two and overlay them, it's, it shows some interesting things. And I asked, I know Troy has asked too, to, they're going to put an overlay together so we can see their different proposals for the airport and 26th Street. But it does open up some possibilities that we maybe didn't think about before. And I think we need to take a look at that so we can maybe come to a conclusion ourselves and talk to the county, because I know the county will be making some decisions in the near future on 26th Street.
Very good. Thank you.
If you'd like, I can schedule a study session when we're...
I think that'd be good.
Very good idea, yes. Now we'll move on to Dave Burbank.
Nothing from Ward 3 tonight.
Nothing from Ward 3 tonight.
I'm going to skip over Kevin. No, Kevin?
Today, I had the privilege of speaking to a government class at the high school and I want to thank Mr. Dean Walters for inviting myself. The high school students had a lot of great questions and it was nice dialogue.
Very good, thank you. And Brent is not here, Nate?
Well, I too had the opportunity to speak today, so I would thank Mr. Walters and give my condolences to the kids in the class that had to listen to me talk at them in the class. And I would also like to thank everyone and to say that I am humbled and honored to start another term.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Tom?
Just a comment that got in front of us, a quick trip on North End Towns. Grand opening is going to be January 22nd from 9 to 11, so that's moved along rather fastly.
Thank you. Great, that's ready to open, I believe. Okay, Chris?
Just a couple of items. Just a reminder, just to let council know, we did have a constituent at a previous meeting raise some issues about our Steel County Assessor and, and had some concerns about activities. Staff and, and council has investigated this and we have determined through response from the Department of Revenue that Steel County Assessor is following accepted and recommended assessment practices in determining residential lot values in the city of Owatonna. So there's no, nothing being done wrong. They're all following accepted practices. So I thought council would like to know that, that that's, that they're doing a really good job at Steel County Assessor's office. And then also wanted to let everyone know that on Monday, January 19th, in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day, the Human Rights Commission will be hosting breakfast at the Plaza Morena beginning at 6:30 a.m. At 7, Anita Patel, the Vice President of Racial Justice and Public Policy for the YWCA in the greater Minneapolis-St. Paul area, will be our featured speaker and would urge you all to attend. I've heard very good things about her and her presentation, so look forward to that.
Well, thank you, Anna. I want to wish everyone a very, very Happy New Year and look forward to another great year. With that, we'll chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
A motion by Kevin Rainey to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dotson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, adjourn.